Good evening, board members of the Pitt County Planning Board. Thank you for being here. This is the January meeting, meeting on January nineteenth, two thousand and twenty-two. Pleasure to have you all here. We welcome not only our board members, but those that are joining us virtually. And I trust that as we go into this meeting, all minds will be listened to and heard, and everybody will be in good shape as we continue to go through. And I don't know what's happening with my... There we go. I'm sorry. Okay, there we go. Let me just call this meeting to order if we could. And again, appreciate each one of you being here and being in attendance. I do believe we have a quorum, but we're going to find out right now as we do the roll call. And Mr. Rhodes, I'm going to ask you to perform that duty, please, sir.
Thank you, Vice Chairman Little. Tab will not be with us tonight, so I'll be sitting in doing the roll call votes. First up, Fred Austin.
Present.
Don Brown.
Here.
Naomi Buck.
Present.
David Davenport.
Here.
Madison Downing.
Here.
Lyman Hardy. Lyman Hardy. RJ Hemby. Steve Little.
Here.
And Charles McLawhorn. Charles McLawhorn. And Mr. Chairman, you do have a quorum, and Mr. John Landrein did notify us and say that he was not going to be able to join us tonight. And of course, you had, we'll speak about the resignation of our chairman a little bit later on the agenda, so you do have a quorum to move forward.
Good deal. Thank you, sir. And again, I thank those members that are, just did answer the roll call. Thank you for being in attendance as we conduct the business during this particular January meeting. So I appreciate that. Right now, if you would, would you join me for just a moment of, not only silence, but for a moment of prayer? That's prayer. Father, we thank you, Lord, for the many blessings of life. We thank you, Lord, for the fact that we can come together in a free and democratic country, that we can express the business of our county and take care of that business. Lord, we just thank you again for the blessings of life. We pray right now that everything that is said and done might be pleasing in your sight, and that we might do the goodwill of, for you and to you, but for all the people of our county. We thank you again, in Christ's name. Amen. So, in saying that, if you would, I need you to join me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which is standing one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you much. I appreciate that. At this time, we would enter that portion of our business where we need the approval of the business of the December fifteenth meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I'll offer motion, RJ Hemby.
Second, Don Brown.
I have a motion by Mr. Hemby and a second by Mr. Don Brown. Any, any questions right now? If not, Mr. Rhodes, I need a roll call.
Yes, sir. Fred Austin.
Approve.
Don Brown.
Approve.
Naomi Buck.
Approve.
David Davenport.
Approve.
Madison Downing.
Approve.
Has Lyman Hardy joined us? RJ Hemby.
Approve.
Steve Little.
Approved.
Has Charles McLawhorn joined us? Okay, unanimous, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate that. The next item of business, I do, would ask, are there any public addresses to the board that we're aware of? If not, we'll move forward. At this time, for administrative matters, there are several things that come up before us. I'm going to let Mr. Rhodes, if he would, again, and we're going to keep him busy tonight, okay? But Mr. Rhodes, if you would, if you would go through these administrative matters for us, you and Mr. Jordan Smith. And let me say something about Mr. Jordan Smith as we get into this, too. Mr. Jordan Smith has just been appointed and is our new county attorney. So congratulations to Mr. Smith, and we appreciate the fact that you're here with us.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
Yes, sir. Mr. Rhodes?
And I'll echo that, too. Most of you realize Jordan's been serving as our legal counsel or legal staff to our planning board for quite a while now, so we're glad to have him on full force as our county attorney. Most of you realize also, our previous county attorney, Janice Gallagher, is now our county manager. So we've had a shifting of seats, and we're very glad that, again, internally, that these individuals have moved up. They do a great job for the county. Also, some other administrative matters. Commissioner Tom Colson is back with us as our commissioner liaison for this current year. He must like working with us because he keeps coming back. So again, we appreciate Commissioner Colson serving in that capacity. Also, most of you recognize that Brad Guth's last meeting with us was in December. Mr. Guth is now Planning Director in a small county in the western part of the state, and we wish him well because he's got a lot of snow on the ground right now. So I'm sure he's busy doing a lot of different things there than he probably normally would do. But we do want to recognize him. Brad served as our chair for well over a year. Did an outstanding job, especially as we went virtually. So we'll certainly miss him and his expertise in that role. So on from that, tonight, our county attorney is also going to sit in with Brad going out as our acting chairman, and we're so new in our term, the current term that starts in October. We decided to go ahead and move forward with the election of a new chairman, so we could then, if need be, also elect a new vice chairman. As we're in a virtual environment right now, if one person is not able to be there, the chairman, if he's not able to be there, we're going to have a vice chairman to take that responsibility over. So with that, Mr. Chair, I'm going to turn it over to our county attorney to handle those elections tonight.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, James. Thank you, Mr. Little. So yes, as James said, Mr. Guth was your chair, and he's resigned. Your rules of procedure really don't talk about what happens when a acting officer resigns from the board. There's language about absence. So based off that, James and I just think it's best that the board act on electing a chair. And I believe the ground rules for that is any member could be nominated from this body to serve as chair, including the, Mr. Little, the current vice chair. Any member can nominate him or herself, or any other member. We'll open the floor to nominations and then hold a vote. If there's multiple nominations, we'll vote on those nominations in reverse order, and any vote would have to take place via roll call, given the remote meeting laws. So those are kind of the ground rules. I don't know if there's any questions from the members of the board. If there are none, I'll poll. Are there any questions?
Jordan, I would like to indicate that we have both Mr. Lyman Hardy and also Mr. McLawhorn have also joined us tonight. So they're all here, so we're up to nine members present.
I see Mr. McLawhorn. Mr. McLawhorn, can you hear us?
Yes, sir.
And I see Mr. Hardy's got his hand raised on the Zoom feature. Mr. Hardy, can you hear us? So just to clarify, I think we can certainly count Mr. McLawhorn present. I don't think we can count Mr. Hardy present until we can get him confirmed with audio, at least audio. I, thanks for that clarification. So given that, are there, I'd open the floor to nominations for the position of chair.
Counsel, this is, this is Charles McLawhorn. I'd like to nominate Steve Little to be our chair.
Second, Don Brown.
Any other nominations? Hearing none, I think it would be appropriate now to have a roll call vote on those in favor of Mr. Steve Little serving as chair. If James could conduct that, please.
Yes, sir, I will. Fred Austin.
Approve, Mr. Little.
Don Brown.
Approve, Mr. Little.
Naomi Buck.
Approve.
David Davenport. Madison Downing.
Approve.
Lyman Hardy. RJ Hemby.
Approved.
Steve Little.
I will accept.
And Charles McLawhorn.
Approved.
Congratulations.
Thank you, Mr. Attorney.
Congratulations, Mr. Little, on being elected chair. With your election to chair position, that means we need to now elect a new vice chair, since that's the role you previously occupied. So the same rules would apply to this election and nomination process. So I would open the floor to any nomination for any members to serve as vice chair.
Mr. Chair, same rules. Do I get to make a nomination?
Absolutely.
I nominate Mr. David Davenport.
Second.
Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I would recommend that Mr. Rhodes conduct a roll call vote on David Davenport to serve as vice chair.
Thank you, Jordan. Fred Austin.
Approve, Mr. Davenport.
Don Brown.
Approve.
Naomi Buck.
Approve.
David Davenport.
Yes, approve.
Madison Downing.
Approve.
Lyman Hardy. RJ Hemby.
Approved.
Steve Little.
Approved.
And Charles McLawhorn.
Approved.
Congratulations.
Unanimous also.
Congratulations, Mr. Davenport. And with that, I'll turn the meeting back over to Chair Little.
Thank you, sir, and thank you, board members. I appreciate your confidence. And as I heard Mr. Hemby say earlier, it's going to be a good year, okay? So twenty, twenty twenty-two should be a good year for us all, because if, in my case, twenty twenty-one, the end of it especially, was kind of a rough year physically. So got that behind me, and it's going to be a good year in twenty twenty-two. And I trust for us and our decisions and for our county and our state and our country that it's going to be a good year in twenty twenty-two. And I know right now we've got a lot of challenges going on amongst our separate work lives and individual lives, so just continue to wish each other well and thank you right now as we move forward. And with that being said, I'd like to move right into our development review. And Mr. Jason Bryant, I believe you're going to be sharing some information with us.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The plan we have, the preliminary plan, Manning Farm. This plan is located on North Store Road, north of its intersection with NC one oh two. It's located in the Aiden Township. It's twenty-two lots, thirty-one point one two acres. And the owner is writ developing in Barchdale. This is a locational map to give you some idea of where this is located. You can see Aiden ZTJ is located close there to North Store Road. It follows along. Here's a closer zoomed-in version. And you can note Ashbury subdivision is to the north. This is the general layout of the plan. And zooming in a little. You can see North Store Road. There's stubout to the south. Debbie Drive will connect in from Ashbury. And they have their open space located in the cul-de-sac. There is a cemetery located on site. Site information, this site is owned ORR with a minimum of twenty-five thousand square foot lot size. Three new streets are proposed. Electricity provided by Agribank Utilities. Water provided by Bell Arthur Water Corporation. The school districts are Aiden Elementary, Aiden Middle, Aiden Griffin High School. And per the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan, this property is designated as agriculture. The plan encourages very low-density, small-scale residential development. Less than one dwelling unit per acre in these areas. The proposed subdivision includes twenty-two lots on thirty-one point one two acres, including two point seven six acres of streets, which equates to point seven one units per acre. So that is less than one dwelling unit per acre. This is consistent with the policy recommendations in the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan. The technical review committee has recommended conditional approval. And these conditions are as followed. Pitt County Planning. An NC DOT-approved mailbox unit is required with lighting. It must be located on a separate lot, due to the Homeowners Association. Lot twelve must be at least forty foot wide. Ensure the distance between the cemetery and the lot line is forty feet. Add the fire district in distance to the nearest fire station. Cemetery is a special purpose lot that requires a ten-foot access easement. No stormwater VMPs are required due to the nutrient loadings being below the maximum loading requirements for nitrogen phosphorus and attenuation calculations. Not showing more than a ten percent increase in peak flow volumes from pre to post-development. Stormwater permit valid for a period of two years from the date of issuance unless a valid building permit has been issued and maintained for the site, or the stormwater permit has been revoked by Pitt County. If after two years the permanent activity has not begun nor valid building permit secured, this permit shall expire. If any amendments are made to the approved plan, revised stormwater calculations must be submitted to the Pitt County Planning Department. Pitt County Emergency Management, all lots must be within four hundred foot of a fire hydrant. Cul-de-sac must be at least ninety-six feet in diameter. And this is a great, they can turn around. Help will be evaluated in accordance with rules nineteen forty laws and rules of cemetery sewage collection treatment and disposal. Bell Arthur will supply water to the proposed subdivision. North Store Road is SR eleven sixteen. Line should be five foot from the right of way. The subdivision must meet North Carolina statute one thirty-six, one oh two point six. Rudolph should have a cul-de-sac appropriate approved end of road signage. The radii of North Store Road are not labeled. NC DOT requests additional right-of-way consisting of a twenty-five by twenty-five public utility easement. Order line taps must be out of any hard surfaces. There are no leaks shown on the pipe under I N S place. So the plans, how you wait, if it is designed to NC DOT standards, this plan does not show any platted access to the existing cemetery. Is that fifteen-foot electric easement to the back of the road on the opposite of the water main along all three roads in the development? This is the view looking across the site from the stubout, Debbie Drive, and the Ashbury subdivision. This is a view of the proposed entrance from North Store Road. Overall, view of the site. This is a view down North Store Road showing adjacent property owner facing south. And this is a view of the adjacent properties across North Store Road facing north. The view of the adjacent property facing south. And again, view of the current site condition.
Jason, just a minute, please. I'm going to ask if our Public Information Office can get your shared screen back up so people can see some of those photos.
Yeah, because we missed the last three or four, I think.
Yes, if Jason could re-screen share, then that will get us back on track.
Thank you, Dawn.
Dawn, I'm seeing that the window I selected is invalid.
Okay, hold on one moment.
I'm going to restart PowerPoint. I think we have it. I restarted everything.
There you go.
And I'm not sure what everyone missed. You want me to start back?
Take that through the photos. That'll be good.
Yes, sir. This is a view of the site from the stubout, Debbie Drive, and the Ashbury subdivision. This is a view of the proposed entrance from North Store Road. This is a view of the site. And you can see Ashbury subdivision in the background. This is a view down North Store Road showing adjacent property facing south. This is a view of the adjacent property across North Store Road facing north. A view of the adjacent property facing south. And a view of the current site conditions. Technical Review Committee has recommended conditional approval. Jason Property Owners have been notified. Stabbers received emails, phone calls in regards to the proposed subdivision. They wish to review the overall plan and design. Some to attend the meeting, and some have provided comment ahead of the meeting that were forwarded out this afternoon. We have each letter. We have received letters from the Benson's, the Cannon's, the Yeaman's, and the Ross's. And with that, we have questions from the board.
Jason, can I say something? I don't remember seeing a question from the Cannon's. Are you talking about the adjoining owners? I don't remember seeing a letter from them.
One of the emails was sent, I believe the email that was entitled Terry ten ten. I'd be honest, I got a little confused myself. I believe one of the letters was submitted by another adjacent property owner on behalf of another adjacent property owner, if that makes sense.
Oh, yes, yes. I mean, I saw the Yeaman's and the Ross's. Anyway, I didn't see the Cannon's, but anyway. Thank you.
Sir, right? Jason, thank you, sir. Board members, we have received this development review for Manning Farm. Questions from the board now concerning this, and are there any questions right now from the board before I ask for a motion? TRC has recommended conditional approval, okay?
I got a couple of questions, Mr. Chairman.
Okay.
My first question is, the DOT said there is no platted access to the cemetery, and certainly there is not. It's kind of ridiculous the way this is drawn. But anyway, it just shows a cemetery in the middle of two lots. And I'm wondering if there is, if the DOT would require, or if this board would require platted access, because it just says there is, they just point out several of these things. Technical Review Committee just points out things that aren't right, but they don't say that they have to be corrected for the condition to be granted. So my question to the board is, should there, should we require platted access to the cemetery? And another question I have is, is there enough room in the cul-de-sac for a fire truck to turn around? Or will it have to back out of the subdivision like it came in? It looks like a very thin amount of space in the cul-de-sac. It just looks like you couldn't turn a fire truck around, and I'm just questioning that. The planning staff can answer that, I'm sure.
Mr. Chairman, I'll, I'll speak up on both of those items. Number one, you're exactly right, Mr. McLawhorn. DOT did point out that there wasn't appropriate access, but if you look under one of the comments from the planning or one of the conditions from the planning office, that would be number five. It says a ten-foot access easement is required for the cemetery lot. So we did go ahead on record and make that a condition.
Okay, thank you. Thank you. Thank you, James.
That's one thing, but again, it's usually a collaborative effort, and somebody comes up with the final condition to go with that. The other thing, there was a lot of discussion also, since there is a stubout street, there was not a requirement for a turnaround there, and there has to be some signage put up. The cul-de-sac bulb at the very end, closer to lots eleven and twelve and near the cemetery that Jason showed us earlier, that cul-de-sac is a standard cul-de-sac that meets the requirements in turnaround radius or radius for DOT. I won't say that all of these very long fire trucks can do a one turnaround that. It might have to pull up or back up, but that is your standard cul-de-sac bulb there. So that's what we're going with. That's our standard one. And our emergency services director has also reviewed this.
Okay, and one thing, James, that I was very disappointed in, and I noticed you did correct this. The engineer put on there that it wasn't within a half a mile of a voluntary agricultural district. We're trying to encourage farming in Pitt County, and I think that the surveyors need to learn what the voluntary agricultural district means because they're not paying any attention to it. It's not right because people buy houses and they don't realize that the farmer might decide to spray chemicals or have dusting or some other activity that is unpleasant to them, and they need to realize there's a farm next door. So anyway, I just point that out to the benefit of our board. I mean, you already corrected what the surveyor said, but I'm just disappointed that the surveyor, because there's a sign right across the board that says it's in a V A D. Anyway.
Yeah, and I'll follow up just to, so the full board knows about the voluntary ag districts. That is a requirement for our subdivision ordinance that that information be shown if it's within a certain distance. We have that information also on our, on OPUS, our online parcel information system for the county, if there's ever any questions. So we do have, again, no street requirements that go along with that program. It's more of an awareness program, just like Mr. McLawhorn has said, to put people on notice that might be moving to that area, that there are farming activities, sites, smells, noises that go along with agricultural production.
Thank you. Thank you, James. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McLawhorn, for your questions and comments. And thank you, James, for clarifying. And thank you, James, for clarification. And in fact, as I look back to all the Pitt County planning comments, you mentioned point number five, but I think number four also eluded the fact talking about the cemetery. Thank you for that clarification.
Uh, Mr. Chair?
I did notice in one of the letters that it did ask that in what was considered in our decisions if DOT was involved and of course, as you saw in, as we went through this today, as Jason mentioned, we not only have Pitt County planning, but the emergency management, environmental health, Department of Transportation, Granville Utilities, Bellhoff Water Corporation, Pitt County Schools, and Pitt County Soil and Water also participates in making these points so that we can make a good decision. Are there any other questions from the board?
Mr. Chair, I believe our public information officer also had something to add.
Oh, alright.
Yes, I just wanted to mention that the screen sharing had another glitch, but Jason has started back again, so we are good to go.
James, so, good to go?
Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman, this, Mr. Chairman, this is David Davenport. I was wondering, I got a couple of emails from Jason with some letters, but I did not receive one with the Cannon's from the Cannon's. Is there any way he could, he could read that letter for us?
Okay, Jason, I think you can go back to it. I thought I saw it flash up earlier, but I think you're right too, David. I don't know that any of us got the Cannon
Alright, Mr. Chair, I'll be happy to read that. Dear sir, I'm very concerned because another subdivision is being placed on North Store Road. The community has been a rural farming community since the seventeen hundreds. Now we have a twenty-two lot subdivision being placed next to a twenty-six lot subdivision. These two subdivisions double the number of families living on the road. They change the nature of a community from rural to suburban and create serious problems for families that are already living here. One major problem is water flow. These subdivisions are draining into it for now that hasn't cleaned out in decades. This particular side of North Store Road was designed by the two sixty-four bypass land use committee as reserved for farmland. The parcel number fourteen two forty-four subdivision located next to the new subdivision could cause runoff drainage in the woods which could back up and flood the backfields on the Sam Cannon Farms thirty-three fifty-four and nineteen four nineteen and the North Store Farm seventeen oh six to the proposed subdivision drainage system which pulls water into the woods lining. The canal has water directed towards the Cannon property, not directly draining parcel fourteen two forty-four into the canal. I'm concerned that there is not enough slope to move the water quickly enough to prevent flooding. Right now, the shallow ditches that pull water off North Store Road can't handle heavy rains and there's flooding in the yards along the road. And at times, North Store Road itself, what's going to happen when you add twenty-two more houses at the very place? The road floods. The flooding occurs before the water can get to the large drainage ditches between the Sam Cannon properties. My home is one of the yards that is flooded by heavy rains. I live directly across the road on parcel three nine four three four from the proposed subdivision. The shallow ditch that borders my yard drains water from the fields and woods behind my house. Takes it to the tile under North Store Road and then backs up the water into my yard because the water running from down from the other side of North Store Road fills the ditches before my water can drain through the tile. Now you are adding more runoff water to the mix without a bigger tile or any effort to retain the water flow. I'm seventy-three years old and poor health and I'm very worried about my flooding, my house flooding out and trying to start over. I'm also sure I have neighbors who are in the same position. My husband and I appreciate it if someone would contact Sam Cannon and let him walk you through his property to show you his concerns respectfully, Lou and Sam Cannon.
Thank you, sir. Uh, David, I think we lost, or board members, sir, I think we lost the screen sharing right at the end, maybe the last couple of paragraphs. But, uh, I hope you had a chance to hear what was expressed. Any questions from the board? I would, TRC has recommended conditional approval. Do I have a motion?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
My, my screen froze. Uh, I would ask the attorney, letter of that magnitude, I think the entire letter should be a matter of record. I think that we, the board members, should have at least assets to that document, meaning that it's a matter of record and it may vary on the concern of the vote.
And I think that's a great point. In fact, I think maybe for the all, I think it was like four letters. Maybe we could have them all added to the records. If that meets the approval of this board.
So, um, and I welcome James to chime in, but I, I believe that all the letters will probably be in your next package and will be part of the minutes that you'll approve. Is that correct, James?
That's correct, Jordan. Our intent was not to read all four. Some of them have very similar language, but, um, we're at, you know, whatever the board would like to decide tonight. Our intent is any of that written information will be folded into your minutes for the next meeting. We've, uh, Jordan has flashed those letters up, uh, read one of them. Uh, if you'd like additional time or if it need be, if we need to read each one, we can do that as well. But, uh, those whole very similar information about some of the concerns there. So, uh, I'll leave that to the chairman and the board's discretion tonight.
Mr. Chairman, I want to second what Mr. Hemby said because the adjoining landowner has presented what I consider to be new evidence about flooding. We don't have any information whatsoever about soils, but I will tell you that being a farm boy, I know that a couple of these soils are very poorly drained. And I think the board may know that too. But we don't have any information about soils, but we do have information from the adjoining landowners that they are concerned about flooding and I didn't intend to oppose this project, but I'm very concerned, you know, about, about people having flooded. And I'll just say that.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to address just a couple of things. Certainly, you know, flooding, uh, we're concerned about that at staff level as is Department of Transportation. Um, there, there's not a flood prone or flood plain area at that northern boundary, or I should say the eastern boundary where it ties into North Store Road. There is a small strip along the eastern or the western side along the canal uh, this in the hundred-year flood plain. So there are some known areas. If you've looked at that track and Jason, I don't know if you can go bring the map back up. Those lots are very large at the end of the road near the cul-de-sac bulb. And basically the wooded area that leads back to the canal, primarily the homes and all will be in the cleared area as well as the septic systems. That's where the better soils are. Would like to remind the board that at this point, this stage of the development review process, soils information, certainly the septic system evaluations typically are not conducted at the preliminary plat stage. They are not required to be conducted at this stage. So this is the preliminary layout. It shows how the road network will work. Certainly, this is a good thing as far as interconnectivity. I know there's concerns about the traffic onto the road on the North Store Road. This helps internalize traffic within the subdivisions. So not only that connectivity over to Ashbury, but further development if it happens on the southern side where there's a stubout road that would continue allowing that internal movement, whether school buses, post office employees, whatever. Those folks can move internally without getting back on North Store Road. So those are just a couple of features I'd like to respond to as far as the discussion goes. Just again, we've got some newer members, just to remind folks what is required and what may not be required at this stage.
Thank you, Mr. Rose. Appreciate that.
Mr. Little?
Yes.
My name is Terry Benson. I'm a resident on North Store Road. I would like to speak a moment, if you may.
Yes, ma'am.
Mike, I do understand that there will be interaction within the subdivision. However, right now on North Store Road, since the southwest bypass has been open, there is no way to access that bypass anywhere from nine oh three. They do use our road, North Store Road, to come down to one oh two to go up, to go to the bypass to Granville, Kinston, whatever. We do have a lot of traffic on this road. We have a lot of elderly citizens on this road as well. That's my major concern. We have construction crap, traffic going up and down. The, the bottom line is adding another development is just going to add a lot more traffic of which needs to be addressed as well. They do have, like I said, a lot of farm equipment are on this road. Mr. Cannon is on this road daily. I have seen vehicles come up behind him, almost hit him. This road is just right now used as a major thoroughfare. And I am just concerned for the people, the elderly people, Mr. Cannon, and the other people on this road as this development adds more vehicles to the road. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Appreciate your comments and I believe yours is one of the letters that we do have that will be entered into uh, the minutes also of this meeting. So thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Little.
Mr. Little? Mr. Little?
Yes.
My name, my name's Gary Ross and I'd like to make a comment if I may.
Okay, sir, three minutes.
Okay. Getting back to the, uh, the plans of that neighborhood and we were speaking about the cemetery. I have a concern about that. Once that neighborhood fills up and, uh, uh, families move in with, with, with multiple childrens, what are we gonna do or what are we gonna address that so they don't interfere with those grave, that grave, that cemetery? Is there gonna be a, a barrier around that cemetery? Because my understanding, there's a probably at least fifty deceased people buried there. And I'm just wondering about children, you know how they could be, would they be going in there and, you know, crawling all around on top of it if it's not kind of closed away? And just have just one access, like you were speaking of, the ten-foot, uh, uh, walkway? I'm just concerned about, is there any way they could put a barrier around that thing to kind of keep people out, not just walking all up on top of it? Because it is gonna be right in two lots right there. That's a concern I have. And I'm just thinking about those people that were farming here all their lives and their, their descendants were buried there, really. And, uh, I'm just concerned about that. Is there any way, uh, is there anything that's, that's gonna be proposed to look into that issue? Thank you, sir.
I'm sorry, James.
Uh, yes, Mr. Chairman, uh, certainly our subdivision ordinance doesn't address that. There are state statutes and our attorney can probably address that a bit better than I can. We are providing, uh, as we've mentioned, uh, to ensure there's access for family members that might want to frequent that, um, grave site. So as far as any barriers or fencing or anything of that sort, there are no requirements per the county regulations, but I would just maybe let the county attorney speak to any problems as far as desecrating graves or anything like that.
Right. Um, yes, Mr. Chairman, so I, I guess there's a couple of, of points. One is, um, when these family graves are, are left out in undeveloped areas, there is a process for certain, um, identified heirs to have access to those grave sites by a matter of law. But additionally, as James said, we are requiring access be provided as one of the conditions of this approval that staff is recommending to you. I'll be candid, I, I, I do not believe, because our subdivision ordinance doesn't talk about it in any way, I would be reluctant to go any steps further, any step further than, uh, providing access. Meaning I would be reluctant to say that you have the authority to require some type of barrier. And that's simply because our subdivision ordinance does not envision this scenario in, in any shape or fashion. And I think providing the access, um, is, is is, is possibly within our purview and should be, uh, a condition approved, but anything beyond that would give me pause.
Good deal. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Thank you, uh, Mr. Ross for your, your comment and your concern, and that is under advisement. Board members, uh, I still had this time would entertain a motion since, uh, we do have a TRC recommendation for conditional approval.
I'd like to make a motion that we conditionally approve this plat.
Motion to approve by Mr. Fred Austin? Second?
Second, David Davenport.
Second by Mr. David Davenport. Thank you, thank you much. Mr. Rose? I need a roll call. I need a roll call.
Fred Austin?
Approve.
Don Brown?
Approve.
Naomi Buck?
Approved.
David Davenport?
Approved.
Madison Downing?
Approved.
Lyman Hardy? RJ Hemby?
Um, I'd approve.
That was not approved, right?
Sir.
Okay. Steve Little?
Approved.
And Charles McGlaughorn?
Not approved.
I want to be sure, not approved again?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Motion passes, Mr. Chairman, for conditional approval.
Thank you, sir. As we move forward to the planning matter, Mr. Eric Gooby. And board members, I got a feeling, well, I don't have a feeling, I know. What Eric's gonna be talking about is gonna be concerning to this planning board is we're gonna have a big role in this land use plan update. So, Eric?
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Chair. Everybody can see my screen, correct?
Yes, sir, if it says planning.
Okay. I'll try to get it to respond. There we go.
There you go.
Yes, sir, as you mentioned, you are gonna have a big role, uh, in this. I'm gonna talk about that here in just one second. Uh, just want to give you just a brief update of where we are in this process. As you recall, back in, uh, November, uh, we gave you our first update that we're, we were kicking this project off. Uh, we'd sent out letters of interest or requests for letters of interest back in September, uh, seeking a consultant to assist us with the development of this land use plan update. Uh, we interviewed a couple of consultants and we selected Stewart, Inc. as the, uh, for this project. Uh, you may remember they previously helped us with the Southwest Bypass Land Use Plan as well as the NC forty-three South Corridor Land Use Plan. Uh, they've also got a lot of, a lot of experience just in other parts of the county as well. They were also, uh, did the town of Winterville and Town of Aiden land use plans most recently. And they're currently working on the town of Farmville, so they've got a lot of experience in this area. Uh, so we hope that, uh, we can certainly utilize them very well throughout this process. And that, that process is expected to last approximately twelve months. Uh, so far, as I mentioned, the, the steps that we've completed so far, just these initial steps to, to kind of get this project kicked off. Uh, first, again, the contract was awarded to Stewart back in November. Uh, they presented a scope of work and a fee proposal. Uh, that along with the contract was reviewed by NC DOT as well as the Office of Inspector General. Uh, because it's, because there's state money involved or, or money from DOT involved, uh, the state had to review it and approve the terms of the contract and those, those fees. Uh, and then the Board of County Commissioners reviewed it, uh, back in December, approved it, and, uh, that was executed back in January. Then back just, uh, the start of January. Um, so we did have a project kickoff meeting, uh, between us and staff. I've had a couple of other productive meetings to start talking about some of our next steps. Uh, one is to get that project schedule nailed down, particularly what our public engagement efforts are gonna be. There's, that includes uh, our public input sessions that'll be coming up later this year, uh, any surveys that we'll be doing. And then project this scope, it's usually all, all about branding. And so we'll be coming up And so we'll be coming up with what is, um, what the name of the project will be, what the name of the, the plan will be, uh, how we get this information out to the public. Uh, we're looking at a website, so there'll be a pretty significant presence, um, from us trying to get this information out and get it into the hands of the people in the county. Uh, as part of that contract approval, uh, was also designated the planning board to serve as the steering committee for this plan. So you will be overseeing the development of it, providing, uh, regular, regular updates to the board about this process, getting a lot of your input in terms of how we proceed, uh, and so forth. So, uh, we'll be continuing to bring information to you on a, on a monthly basis. And, uh, certainly looking forward to this board helping to, to steer that, steer this whole effort. Uh, then also probably within the next month or so, we're gonna be looking at organizing stakeholder interviews throughout the county, trying to talk to people who, who have interests within the county, particularly, uh, whether it's elected officials, appointed officials such as yourselves, um, large landowners, members of certain communities, um, and trying to get their input on this plan. And along with that comes with establishing some more specialized working groups, so areas that may need some more individual attention. Things like areas north of the river, or they're just north of the river in general, or agricultural communities. Um, just to get a more focused approach and a little more attention to those areas in the plants that we make sure that we're addressing those needs. Uh, so with that, Mr. Chair, I don't have any other information for you tonight, but like I said, we'll be continuing to bring this information to you, uh, monthly. And we'll have a lot more information in terms of the project schedule and our next steps after that, uh, probably by next month's meeting.
Good deal. Thank you, Eric. Appreciate that update. On our comprehensive land use plan update and realizing too, what you just said is being appointed as that steering committee, uh, we're gonna have, we're gonna have to take an active interest in this and to make sure that we all are headed down the, the right path together. So, thank, appreciate your, appreciate your update.
Thank you.
As we're looking at it.
I'll keep my screen up for James for the finish up for tonight, so.
Okay, all right. James, you're gonna talk about our informational items, I believe.
Yes, uh, fairly quickly, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to bring you up to date. Uh, Eric's already alluded to one of our major projects coming up, uh, for our year twenty twenty-two, um, work program. Certainly our comprehensive land use plan update takes top billing here. Uh, we know that's gonna be a big undertaking. That means a lot of meetings out with the community, stakeholder meetings, bringing you up to date. And, you know, we talked about a number of items just here tonight, whether it's ag land preservation, whether it's continued suburbanization. Um, it's been about ten years since we've addressed our land use plan. So here's a good opportunity. If you know, uh, concerns, interest in your area, again, this one reason we wanted the planning board's involvement as the steering committee. You represent the entire county just by virtue of how the geographic areas of your membership on the board. So it's very important that each one of you provide some input as we move along in this development process. We are also in the process of, uh, completing now a comprehensive transportation plan, uh, that's with, uh, in concert, not only with just unincorporated Pitt County, but we've also brought in the city of Greenville and all the other municipalities within the county. Pretty large undertaking. We've been at this for a year. We hope to wrap it up this current calendar year with, uh, the North Carolina Department of Transportation's assistance. Last year, those of you that were on the board realized we went through our, an update of all our development ordinances that pertain to certain general statutes that, uh, had been updated by the, uh, state legislature. There's also some subsequent action that needs to be taken on certain types of environmentally related regulations. Our soil erosion, sedimentation control regs need to be updated as well as our stormwater regulations and water supply watershed. So those are gonna be, uh, moving along. Some of those will be completed hopefully by mid-year. We've talked a little bit at some of our previous meetings about the American Rescue Plan Funds, and we really see those giving a boost so, to some of our recreation facilities and especially out at the Alice King District Park. Uh, so we're looking at expanding and also certainly in, improving some of the current facilities that are on site there. So those are just some of the main things that are on our work program, if you'll go to the next slide. Um, three items that you're very familiar with, also zoning related items that came before you for recommendations to the commissioners. I'm proud to say that the commissioners followed all of your recommendations. The first one was our text amendment for large scale data processing centers. People locally often say cryptocurrency facilities. Those amendments, including removing those uses from our rural residential or rural, our, our, our districts, that was approved by our, the commissioners just last week, and that's now in place. Also, a conditional district rezoning for that site at the very eastern tip of the county, um, for Mr. Ortiz, uh, that was approved. Um, the Tony Moore conditional district rezoning, you may recall, because of the Southwest Bypass Plan and some other policies and practices, we didn't feel like that was appropriate. The board, uh, the planning board recommended disapproval. The, the commissioners also, uh, moved to deny that request. So those were all taken care of during, uh, the last month or so since your last meeting. And then finally, um, just remember, we've got some other information in your package. And a lot of this information, certainly all of our existing plans are online and that website is shown at the bottom of the screen. Mr. Chairman, that's all we have for tonight. I welcome any questions if there are any.
I would ask if there are any questions from the board members, but then just before I do, in, in a comment, I do want to recognize and hope that each one of you will recognize that when you look at our slate of board members, uh, we've got individuals on here that have unique talents and expertise that they bring to this board and can offer some great contributions, I think, as we move forward. So thank you for, uh, volunteering to serve on this board, and I just look for a, a good year as we go forward. So are there any other comments before the chair does entertain a motion to adjourn from any of our board members?
Oh, no motion, Mr. Chairman.
I have a motion.
To adjourn.
To adjourn. All, all in favor of that? Just say, smile at each other and have a great month until we come back together again.
Good means.
Appreciate you.